All right, let's call to order the Cochise County Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 22nd. We're meeting in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room on Melody Lane in Bisbee. The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting, and any item listed is open for discussion and possible action. Please note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published, meaning presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from those on the attached versions. Members of the board may attend in person or via Microsoft Teams. Members of the public may also attend via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. The board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda to speak on an agenda item. Or during the call to the public, please complete a speaker request form and return it to the clerk of the board prior to 9:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting. We will begin with an invocation from District One.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Crosby, for this invitation. Thomas Jefferson commented that the enormities of the times in which I have lived have forced me to commit myself on the boisterous ocean of political passions. With that in mind, let us pray for strength at work. Oh, Lord Jesus, our Redeemer, you never failed to go to work or lack the strength to fulfill your responsibilities. Today, I pray to be like you, asking for immense strength at work. Please grant me the grace to work without complaining and with joy and gratitude, considering it a blessing from above. Bless me with a fresh supply of energy on all my working days and anoint my opinions and ideas so that I may see the fruits of my efforts. I pray in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. All right, next, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. All right. All right, next up, we'll do roll call, District One. Crosby's here. District Two.
Gomez is here.
District Three, Antonori's here. All supervisors are present and in person. And we will begin with a call to the public. Up first, we have Mr. John Doe. Hopefully, he doesn't have a toe tag on.
Ha ha.
John Doe is.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Excellent. Good morning, supervisors. Thank you for your time. I know we're all talking about water flow here today, and I want to talk about flooding. In just the past few weeks, over 130 people lost their lives in catastrophic flooding across Texas and New Mexico. Entire families swept away, homes destroyed, communities devastated. And now, public officials in those areas are being asked the hard questions. Why weren't floodplain rules enforced? Why were structures allowed to remain in harm's way? I'm here to urge you, don't let Cochise County be next. Runoff danger is real in the desert. On a flood designated parcel here in the county, an RV and a shipping container were placed in a FEMA special flood hazard area. RV sat for months and years with no floodplain use permit. The shipping container, though currently illegally permitted, is not anchored, elevated, and violates both FEMA regulations and the county's own floodplain ordinance. These are clear violations, not technicalities. When I filed my formal complaint, I wasn't met with concern or enforcement. Instead, I received this response from Jackie Watkins, the Cochise County Floodplain Administrator, in writing, and I quote, "We intend to take no further action nor to answer any more of your questions at this time. As I'm sure you know and can appreciate, the law does not obligate our office to explain to every citizen why we believe another citizen is in compliance with the law or on what basis another citizen received a permit," end quote. Again, this is Jackie Watkins, the Floodplain Administrator. Essentially, what I'm hearing is, we don't care. I ask you directly, is that what the board considers an acceptable response to a public safety concern? Because while an office may not feel obligated to explain, ignoring floodplain enforcement puts lives at risk, and this type of dismissive approach erodes public trust and county leadership. This isn't just about one parcel. This appears to reflect a broader pattern of selective permitting and lax enforcement within Cochise County flood zones. And if that's the case, it puts entire communities, not just one property, at risk. Floodplain regulations exist for one reason, to prevent loss of life, property, and legal liability. We've seen what happens when those rules are treated as optional. I have documentation, correspondence, and maps to support every point I've made today, and I'm prepared to share them. I'm respectfully requesting that the board initiate a full and independent investigation into how this case was handled, including a review of permit issuance, staff communications, how the determination was made, and whether or not county and FEMA requirements are being properly enforced in this county. Please take this seriously. I'd also like this matter to be added to a future board agenda so the public can be assured that floodplain safety is not being compromised. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Ms. Allison Wurst.
Good morning again, supervisors, and thank you for allowing me to speak again. I have several items of concern. First, I understand the need for privacy when discussing personnel issues or legal matters with an attorney, but why the need for a closed-door session about our voting equipment? Shouldn't election-related issues be discussed out in the open and in front of the public? Last Friday, I emailed County Attorney Lori Zuko with concerns about your June 19th executive session. My email was forwarded to her deputy county attorney and each of you board members. Yet, I had, I heard nothing back from anyone. Yesterday, I revisited the website and noticed that a 14-page document titled TC Handout had mysteriously appeared. Why wasn't this posted and made public a month ago? And why did no one respond to my email of last Friday? This is of utmost concern. Next, I'd like to, I'd like to know when the board hired Mick Rusing for $20,000. The check was written to him on May 1st, which was over two months before his letter to ACIP was made public on July 10th. Is the $20,000 supposed to pay for his letter to ACIP as well as a potential lawsuit against the insurance pool if they don't pay Mr. Crosby's demand of $300,000? When the board hired outside attorney Brian Blem for the 2022 election-related lawsuits, his letter of engagement for $10,000 from Valley Law Firm was discussed during an open meeting and posted on the website. Where is a similar meeting, excuse me, letter from Mr. Rusing? Finally, regarding speaker request forms, I would respectfully like to ask that a third option be added to the bottom of the form. People should be allowed to submit their support or opposition to an agenda item without having to sit through an often lengthy meeting. Please note that the planning and zoning speaker request forms allow for this option. I am, I'm not going to read that option for you. It's on the form, on the website. Some folks are unable to attend meetings due to work, medical appointments, family commitments, travel, et cetera. The P&amp;Z Commission actually allows people to comment by raising their hand to speak during the meeting, even without submitting a speaker request form. I am just asking to please add a third option of expressing a position on an agenda item without attending the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. So, next up, we will begin with the recognition of Bob Hollister. So, can I get a motion to approve, consent, or excuse me, a motion to approve Agenda Item Number One?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve Agenda Item Number One, recognition of Robert "Bob" Hollister for 32 years of volunteer service to Cochise County.
Second.
All right. So, we have a motion. I will allow Mr. Dan Duchan. Mr. Duchan here. There he is.
Yes. Good morning, Daniel Duchan with Emergency Management. First, I'd like to welcome Bob Hollister. Will you come on up? Thank you, Bob. Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So, we're here to recognize Bob's 32 years of service and retirement as the RACES Officer, which is a volunteer position. A little bit about Bob. Bob retired from the Army as an intelligence officer after a stellar career where he learned both Russian and German to understand the capabilities, intentions, and intentions of both East German and Soviet forces during the Cold War. This included highly classified assignments in the field station Osburg and with the British 13th Signal Regiment. His background in modern radio communications made him uniquely qualified for his post-retirement activities. After retiring from the Army, Bob spent several years as a defense contractor on Fort Huachuca and later as a probation officer with Cochise County. He became our county Radio Amateur Civil Emergency Services RACES Officer in 1993 and has trained our local communications volunteers through bimonthly training sessions and multiple exercises with local hospitals and first responders. He was also certified to teach the FEMA Communications Leader course and trained dozens of other communicators across the state in those vital skills. Additionally, he worked with county officials to secure a grant for the purchase of the county mobile communications unit and drove it back to Arizona from the manufacturer facility in Florida. This vehicle has supported countless search and rescue missions, public service events such as bike races and outdoor events, and even the 2011 Monument Fire, where Bob was a key member of the team coordinating communications between the various local, state, and federal fire agencies. Expanding beyond typical RACES duties, Bob also volunteered hundreds of hours of his time to standardize communications channels for all our county first responders and program individual radios for smaller agencies who did not have their own radio technicians. This included providing radio support to fire departments, fire districts, police departments, and local hospitals across the county. In addition to supporting hundreds of search and rescue missions, Bob has spent considerable time maintaining and upgrading the technology in the MCU, such as building the first computer to provide mapping software to support search and rescue. In summary, Bob's contributions have provided benefits to the citizens of Cochise County that cannot be measured or understood. It is my honor to provide him with this small token of our appreciation for his decades of volunteer service. Bob, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
The same thing? You don't have to.
Yeah. Spend a lot of time using a microphone.
You're serious.
Bob, thank you very much.
Excellent. Bob, would you like maybe your family to come up for some photos? All right. All right, Bob. Okay. For a guy that talks on the radio, he's awful quiet. Then we'll go outside for photos and...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Duchan. All right.
Thank you.
So, you don't, you don't need to vote on, right? No, okay. No.
All right. So, next up, we have a presentation for... Oh, hang on. Let, let some folks are stepping up. Give them a second. So, we have a presentation on the Auditor General's, Auditor General's Fiscal Year 23-24 Audit. Okay. Great. All right. So, we're going to have, I assume this is Ms. Carrasco, Ms. Decker, and Terrence Stangle?
I'm Renee Carrasco. This is Terrence Stangle.
Oh, okay. All right.
I could not make it.
All right. So, you guys are going to brief us on the Auditor General's findings. Thank you. Floor is yours.
Hey, well, good morning, Chairman Antonori, members of the board, Mr. Casey. I am Terrence Stangle. I'm the financial audit manager that oversaw your audits. And with, with me today is also with Renee, who is the deputy manager. Thank you for letting us present to you at your regular board meeting. All right. Now, let's see if I can get this to it right. Can you get it?
What do they got to point at, Joe?
Oh, that direction. Perfect. Thank you. Okay. So, just to give you a little bit of a pressure of who we are, before we discuss your county audits, our office is a legislative agency made up of nonpartisan staff. We provide impartial information and specific recommendations to improve the operations and programs of the state and local governments, which includes Cochise County. We are well-versed in following standards, which include government auditing standards.
Sure.
So, why are we here? We're here, similar to previous presentations with the board. We are required by Arizona Revised Statute 11661 that directs the County Board of Supervisors to require its auditors, our office, to present any audit results to you, to the board in a regular meeting without the use of a consent agenda. And that has to be done within 90 days of the completion of the audit. It's a great opportunity for us to be able to answer any questions for you and provide information on the audit. So, we sent communication to the board at the beginning of each fiscal year that we do the audits, and that outlines our responsibilities over both the financial and the federal audits. And as a reminder, I will walk through those with you this morning. And following, I'll walk through the county's responsibilities. As the auditor, our responsibility is to plan and conduct the audit of the county's financial statements and federal compliance audits in accordance with U.S. generally-accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards, along with uniform guidance. To obtain reasonable assurance whether the county's financial statements are free of material misstatement, reasonable assurance is high, but it's not absolute level of assurance. With that being said, there's always a risk of not identifying material misstatements and noncompliance is due higher due to fraud, whether there's error of fraud, because it involves collaborative effort to commit fraud, management not using or overriding internal controls. We are responsible to consider internal controls that are relevant to the county's preparation and fair presentation of its financial statements and design appropriate audit procedures. We perform tests of the county's controls and compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements. Communicate significant matters for both the financial statement and federal compliance audit that is completed through the communications that you receive directly from our office. Express our opinions concerning whether the county's financial statements, its schedule of expenditures of federal awards were presented materially in all respects. And report internal control deficiencies and instances of noncompliance to you. Likewise, there's responsibilities for county management. Those include prepare and fairly present the financial statements, its note disclosures and schedules in accordance with generally accepted auditing principles and uniform guidance. Design and implement internal controls over the county's financial statement preparation and internal controls to prevent and detect fraud. Evaluate and monitor the county's compliance with laws and regulations, contracts, and grant agreements that have a direct and material effect on the county's financial statements and its administration of federal programs. Follow up and take corrective action on audit findings, which includes providing the auditors with a corrective action plan and a summary status each of the following year.
I'm super excited.
Provide auditors with unrestricted access to its staff, documentation, information systems, and any resources necessary to complete the audit. This also includes meeting deadlines that were previously agreed at the start of the audit. Today, we will be discussing our audit work on the county's annual financial reports. We issue three separate reports all combined together. There's an annual financial report, a report on internal control and on compliance, and the federal single audit reports. As we have done in the past, when we have completed the audit, we send you an email with a link so you can go on and look at the actual report, which was dated this year, May 30th, 2025. The first report, which was the county's annual financial report, presents the county's annual financial statements, our opinion on them, and the audit's objective is to obtain reasonable assurance of whether those financial statements as a whole are free of material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error, and to issue that report, which includes our opinion. Once again, for fiscal year 2024, we reported an unmodified, or like we say, a clean opinion, which means the county's financial statements are reliable. That's a good thing. The second report was the report on internal control and on compliance, and this is where you'll find any financial statement-related findings and recommendations resulting from the financial statement audits. And then, the third and final report is the single audit report. It includes our assessment of the county's compliance with federal programs, requirements over each of those federal programs, and whether they complied with all, in the material, materially with the compliance requirements of the federal programs. For this year, we have included three financial statement findings and two single audit findings that Renee will discuss with you shortly. Along with those financial statements and single audit report that we send to you, we include a financial report highlight. That financial report highlight is a two-page summary that you should have received with that report. Included in those highlights, we include 10 years of revenue and expense information on a graph to let you know where the county stands. We also summarize all of the financial findings included within the reports. I'm going to walk through with you briefly some financial statement highlights that we included here today. So, the first is on the primary revenues. And as you can see, the county has four main sources of revenues, and they continue to be federal and state grant programs, county property taxes, share of state sales tax, and the county's sales tax. Three of the county's four main revenue sources have remained fairly consistent over the last five years, where the county's revenues for federal and state law programs have increased by $26.3 million from 2020 to fiscal year 2024. These increases are primarily due to the county receiving COVID and non-COVID grants, such as the local assistance taxpayer fund monies. Similar for expenses, we have four primary main expense purposes of the county, which is general government, public safety, highways and streets, and health and welfare. General government expenses has increased $6.7 million from fiscal year 2023 to fiscal year 2024, primarily due to the increase in salary and employer-related expenses, along with a pension expense incurred by the county. Public safety expenses has also increased from fiscal year 2023 by $8 million, and that was also due to professional service expenses and equipment purchases, employee salaries, and EREs. However, we've seen highways and streets and health and welfare expenses that remain relatively consistent. In the next graph, we highlight it by year trend, where you can see that in the light blue, we see revenues, dark blue is expenses, and then right above that, there's a line, and that represents the county's net position. And as you can see by that bar line, your net position continues to increase. The net position represents reserves, and each year, it has significantly gone up, which is a good thing. Most importantly, the county's overall net position increased by $29.9 million in fiscal year 24. Specifically, net position is not always spendable. A portion of that is $139.6 million that is non-spendable because it's invested in capital assets. $58.7 million of it is restricted, and it has a residual negative unrestricted balance of $11.8 million. Mostly, that is attributed to the net pension liability. And finally, I'd like to highlight the county's federal expenditures. As you can see from the, from the graph, your county federal expenditures have actually decreased from fiscal year 2023. We see that the four largest federal agencies have been, that the county's received funds are from the Department of Treasury, Department of Housing and Urban Development, Department of Health and Human Services, and the Department of Agriculture. The significant decrease from fiscal year 2023 to fiscal year 2024 is primarily due to the county's COVID-19 pandemic monies they receive from the Department of Treasury decreased by $10.5 million. The county's Department of Housing and Urban Development and U.S. Department of Health and Human Services expenditures have started to increase from the prior years. I will now turn it over to Renee, who will be discussing the status of the prior-year audit findings and the current-year findings of the audit.
Good morning, Chairman Antonori, members of the board, Mr. Casey. As Chair mentioned, my new companion, Carrasco, the deputy manager that oversaw the audit. As previously noted, including the annual financial single audit report, we present the county's report on internal control and compliance, which, thank you, which is where you will find our financial audit findings along with the county's response to it. The county reported three financial statement findings in the report. In the first financial statement finding, we reported that the county failed to provide key information to us timely, and its initial financial statements contained misstatements and misclassifications, which delayed their issuance and increased the risk those relying on the reported financial information could be misinformed. We identified numerous errors in the financial statements and note disclosures that the county corrected before the report was issued. As a result of these errors, the county's financial statements and single audit were issued past the statutory deadline of March 31st, 2025. The errors occurred because there was a lack of independent reviews and detailed policies and procedures over financial reporting. We recommend that the finance department should provide accurate and key information to auditors by agreed-upon deadlines established at the beginning of the audit to ensure timely assurance of its audited annual financial report. Next, prepare the financial statements associated note disclosures and supporting schedules accurately and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Require a second employee knowledgeable of journal entries and accounting principles to review and approve journal entries to ensure that financial activity is recorded correctly in the financial statements and associated note disclosures. And finally, update existing policies and procedures for preparing its financial statements in accordance with accounting principles and train responsible employees. Because of this finding, we also reported finding 2024-102 for the single audit because it was issued past the single audit deadline of March 31st, 2025. The county management reported that the deficiencies will be corrected March 31st, 2026, for the fiscal year 2025 annual financial and single audit report. It's like this. The second financial statement finding identified a deficiency in the county's purchasing card process. Specifically, the county paid $43,703 for food and beverage, lodging, and conference costs using travel card without complying with policy resulting in risk of misuse of public monies. Specifically, the county's procurement department created a pilot travel card program in 2022, and employees used 25 shared travel cards for travel-related policies, purchases, excuse me. The department allowed employees to use the cards and make purchases and did not follow the county's existing travel policy or purchasing card policy. We recommend that the county's procurement department should ensure any future pilot travel card programs or other purchasing or credit card programs require cardholders or employees allowed access to shared cards to follow the county's purchasing card policy, including requirement to obtain prior approval from the cardholder's department head and the county's finance director for single purchases exceeding 1,000. Refrain from purchasing travel-related food and beverages. Submit an itemized receipt for all transactions. Attend training and sign a user agreement certifying, certifying that it will comply with the county's purchasing card policy prior to being issued a card. Next, revise existing training, purchasing card, and/or travel policies, user agreement to align with any future pilot travel card program or other purchasing or credit card programs prior to initiating the program and allowing cardholders, cardholders to make purchases. And lastly, review the pilot travel card program's transaction since its inception in 2022 to determine whether purchasing card transactions were appropriate. County management reported that it concurs with the finding and corrected the deficiency in February 2024, as they canceled the travel card pilot program because it lacked the staff and resources to continue managing the program. Moving on to financial statement finding 2024-03. Third and final financial statement finding identified a deficiency with the county's Accommodation School District reported by other auditors. The Accommodation School District did not retain supporting documentation such as invoices from $53,638 in expenditure transactions tested that supported the amount paid with public monies was appropriate. This occurred because the Accommodation School District did not have proper internal controls. We recommend that the Accommodation School District should ensure individuals with the skills, knowledge, and expertise prepare and retain required source documentation. Lastly, review material transactions for the fiscal year and obtain replacement documentation to replace missing invoice information. County management reported that it concurs with the finding and corrected the deficiency. In January 2024, the district hired experienced business manager with knowledge and experience expertise to prepare, retain source documentation. As previously noted, including the annual financial and single audit report, you will find our federal compliance audit findings along with the county's responses for them. The county reported two federal compliance findings related to the county's WIC Special Supplemental Nutrition Program for Women, Infants, and Children program with the Health and Social Services Department and the timeliness of the audit that I discussed with you earlier. Contrary to the federal regulation state policies, the county's Health and Social Services issued program benefits without requiring each program participant to complete and sign a rights and obligation form during the eligibility certification process, agreeing to provide current and truthful information, abide by program rules, and not share with benefits, cards, or other benefits. Specifically, for 15 of 62 participants tested, the department did not require the participants to complete and sign a rights and obligation form. This included six participants' initial certifications and nine participants' recertification for ongoing benefits. We recommend that the county should follow the state's eligibility certification policies that require WIC program participants to complete and sign a rights and obligation form prior to the department issuing benefits during initial certifications and recertification for ongoing benefits. Next, training department staff who are responsible for the eligibility certification process regarding the following requirements. Participants must be informed of their rights and obligations prior to issuing benefits during the participant's initial certification, recertification for ongoing benefits. Participants must sign the rights and obligation form during the eligibility certification process, agreeing to provide current and truthful information, abide by program rules, and not share with benefit cards or any other benefits. Department staff must maintain the forms and eligibility system. Lastly, perform periodic monitoring of the clinic sites to ensure department staff who are responsible for the eligibility certification processes are performing all steps. The county reported that it concurs with the finding corrected deficiencies by March 2025. I want to note that in the prior fiscal year, we reported one financial statement finding. The financial statement finding was related to purchasing card activities, which we reported in 2023. Our auditing standards require that we follow up on any prior-year audit findings, and we determined that the finding has been fully corrected. This completes our presentation of the county's fiscal year 2024. This completes our presentation of the county's fiscal year two thousand and twenty four, including the five reported findings. Are there any questions that we could answer for the board?
I don't have any questions, but I have a few comments, and one of them is that we, I know, are very interested in our fiduciary responsibility, so we take it very seriously. This PowerPoint presentation that we just looked at will be available to the public on our Board of Supervisors meeting and agenda website, isn't that correct? So anybody, I know that it's got to be very difficult to plow through something like that and expect people to be really thrilled about it, but I will come back and I will reread it and get a handle on it. So I wanted to sit, because it is a going to be an issue on our consent agenda, which I don't want to take out of the consent agenda, I just wanted to note that the pension expense for PSPRS and CORB is thirty six million, and that is still big, but headed in the right directions in terms of the percent provided by the system going up and the percent provided by tax funding going down. It's really astounding. It's our funded ratios are only fifty six percent, fifty six point three percent, fifty nine point nine percent, and this is a vast, vast improvement over years past. So like I said, we are headed in the right direction there, and I will come back and review PowerPoint, and I appreciate you being here today.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Nope. All right. Thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your work on the audit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next up, I'd like to get a motion to approve consent agenda items one through seven, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve consent agenda items one through seven.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
No, sir.
None. All right. Motion for the board is to approve the consent agenda items one through seven. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. All right, and I would now like to take the liberty to make an agenda change real quick because I see we have a lot of people in the audience that I believe are here for a particular agenda item, which I believe is agenda item number seventeen, which is the resolution regarding the Mexican gray wolf. And rather than have you guys sit here for two hours as we go through numerous public hearings, I'm going to ask the clerk and the assistant deputy county manager to move that agenda item up, so we'll go to that next. Is that cool? We got that?
Yes, that's good.
All right. All right. So here we go. So now, the motion before the board, can I get a motion to move agenda item number seventeen?
At point of order, I think that's up to your discretion, and we can just move into it.
Oh, okay.
But I'll just make the motion.
Okay, great. That'd be great.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty five dash twenty one expressing opposition to the current implementation of the Mexican gray wolf reintroduction program and calling for reforms.
Second.
All right. Seconded. All right. Discussion, we have several folks that had requested to speak on this item. First up is Ms. Anne Prentia, Presenya, Presenya. There you go. Ms. Presenya, are you there? Sorry for butchering the name.
Hello?
Yes, there you are. You have three minutes, ma'am.
Excellent. All right. I'll take about one. Good morning. My name is Anne Presna. My husband and I have owned a ranch in Palomina since two thousand and two. I am dismayed at the board's resolution. Why do we continue to support an industry that has destroyed much of the native grasslands in our county and the wildlife that once called its home? Mexican wolves, prairie dogs, Mojave rattlesnakes, and other grassland species are nearly gone to publicly supportive way of life that requires large subsidies of public funds and public lands to survive. Some ranchers raise cattle responsibly, but they are rare. It is almost impossible to do it in the desert southwest where grasslands were grazed primarily by insects, not bovines. Just look around you and see what little is left of intact grassland here, almost none. I no longer eat beef, but have switched my meat purchases to Wild Idea, buys in a business that restores grasslands and lives harmoniously with the wild animals that share those grasslands. At a prior meeting, many in the audience downplayed the threat of climate change to our ability to survive. I am one who believes that it does pose a huge threat to all life on earth and that the cattle industry has played an outside role in furthering its progress, eating our planet and depleting our water resources. The resolution of the board is irresponsible at best. I've worked my entire professional career for the environment. I have watched the precipitous decline in many species in my seventy-four years on earth, including Mexican gray wolves. I want them in my county. I do not want them be listed, and I want public funds to continue to support their recovery. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have Mr. James Schmidt. Mr. Schmidt, you got three minutes.
Good morning, honored county supervisors and ladies and gentlemen, thank you for hearing me today. Thank you for your public service to the citizens of Cochise County and addressing issues, hot issues like the dangerous Mexican gray wolf. Again, I'm James Schmidt. I've been twenty-two years in Cochise County as a full-time resident, thirty-five years in Arizona. I have sixty-four years with coyotes, and I'm a retired USDA wildlife specialist for predators and feral canine expert for Cochise County. On request, I've appeared as an expert witness in many states across the west and helped coyote issues and feral animals. Also, I'm fully trained in the wolf investigation, depredations, so I know how it all works. As you know, I'm a hardliner against the wolf in Cochise County, as I support all of those hardworking legal citizens earning a living and feeding their families while working on the hard life of agricultural business. That life is tough enough as it is without adding government-funded, inflexible wolf program that allows dangerous wolves to prey on their private property, expensive livestock. Today's Board of Supervisor Resolution twenty five twenty one opposing the ongoing Mexican gray wolf program in Cochise County is the correct action to take for all of our citizens in agriculture. Cochise County is not, nor will it ever be, Yellowstone National Park, a place for volumes of tourists to look and experience nature in its natural setting while watching from inside their SUV. Honored supervisors, you know this is a county of hardworking people, and it is not a national park. I commend you all for taking a strong stance on the wolf by supporting the very citizens that elected you. You all know I want strong words and firm action, and you have done very well. I'm very proud of all three of you, very proud. America has become weak in the past few decades, yielding to some unrealistic ideas that often cause more harm than good. This is clearly one of those situations, and you have acted appropriately by condemning it, by wanting it stopped now. Thank you. You can always count on me to support each one of you in any way I can. Call on me anytime, and I'll be strongly, there should never be wolves in Cochise County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Zach Alma.
Good morning, board supervisors and everyone here. Thanks for taking some time. I wanted to focus a little bit on representation on this issue. We know it's, there's some drama involved, right? And there's different perspectives going into it. But I was here during the initial town hall, and it feels like, based on this resolution, the representation from county leadership taking the decision to put this resolution in really doesn't accurately represent the demographics and the people of this county. I work with ranchers. I have my own livestock on a small family scale. I respect livestock production. I believe this landscape can do that in a sustainable way. But I want to throw some numbers out there because it feels like this whole narrative, which I understand that folks want to protect their industry, right? Protect one's business. I feel like we're really getting behind that. So some numbers based on two thousand and twenty-two, just to get everything from the same year. Cochise County population, one hundred twenty-six thousand. Cattle, one hundred sixty-two thousand. I would imagine that's lower with the local droughts. That's about three hundred six ranches. To be generous, we could say maybe there's four thousand county residents that work in this industry or live this industry, live on these family ranches, so maybe three percent of the population. That comes about total agriculture of one percent of GDP of Cochise County, four percent of private industry jobs. Just for some other numbers, that livestock is about one hundred fifteen million dollars in market value. Cochise County, again, two thousand and twenty-two. For some other ideas, two hundred ten million dollars in restaurant and bar industry. Retail's about one point one eight billion. And so what I'm trying to get at is, I can respect wanting to protect your own industry, but the board of supervisors making these decisions based on a very small percent of our county with one perspective, the folks who are for Mexican wolves cover diversity of opinions, right? We're not all here to protect an industry. We're here for ecological connectivity, right? The functions of the land and water of this beautiful biodiverse region amongst tourism, amongst many other reasons, right? So I strongly recommend that this is tabled, this resolution, and that we really actually think about where this is going. Because we live in a time with induced polarization in our society, right? I believe that comes down from us from two political systems that does not benefit us as a country, as a state, as a county, and by buying into these toxic narratives of us versus them is not productive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Ms. Allison Morse. Made it worth the drive from Portal today.
Sure was. Thank you very much, supervisors. I appreciate you allowing me to speak in opposition to your resolution regarding the Mexican gray wolf. I don't think anyone here today is suggesting we get rid of cattle ranching in Cochise County. We understand that it's part of our county's history and provides an important industry, despite the difficulty to sustain it in an ever-increasing dry and barren landscape. Most of us have friends who are ranchers, and for the most part, would say they are decent, hardworking folks. Many of us would like to see, however, an improvement to the stewardship of the land and watersheds, along with respect for the native flora and fauna of Cochise County. I have submitted to you today a clean and simplified revision of your resolution that I shared with you last week with input from numerous experts in the history and biology of the Mexican gray wolf, as well as the administration of the ESA and ranching subsidies. I have also included updated footnotes in this current revision. On May eighth, you held a work session on the quote "strategy of the Mexican wolf" given by Pascal Berliou of the Pro Ranching Eastern Arizona Counties Organization. It was billed as a quote "data-based collaborative discussion opener." Five days later, on May thirteenth, you held a town hall meeting where public was given the opportunity to share their concerns about this issue. Twenty individuals, mostly cattle ranchers, spoke against the Mexican gray wolf, many expressing the desire to delist the wolf and defund the program. I should add here that ranchers represent less than two percent or possibly three percent of our county's population. On the other hand, a total of twenty-three of us, twenty-three of us, spoke in favor of the wolf, with an additional nine submitting comments to support the wolf. In all, there were thirty-two of us in favor of the wolf and twenty opposed. We recognize that the wolf has a right to be here, just as the ranchers believe they do. We are just asking for tolerance and coexistence, not removal and extirpation. We ask again that you please read into the record today how many speaker request forms you received in favor or in opposition of this agenda item. Your constituents deserve to know this information and should be, which should be recorded in the minutes. We are respectfully requesting that you table this decision until you're able to consider evidence-based facts from experts in the field and incorporate these into your resolution. This document is unnecessarily restrictive and is based on many falsehoods. As such, it does very little to address the real concerns of your constituents, the majority of which have expressed strong support for the Mexican gray wolf. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have Ira Bugby Niels. Hopefully, I said that right. Ms. Niels, are you there? On teams? Is she on there, Laura? Nope. How about Dr. Elitris Niels on teams?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, there you are. You have three minutes, ma'am. Doctor.
Okay. Well, thank you. Hello, my name is Dr. Elitris Niels. I'm an Arizona native, born and raised on a working private ranch near the South Mountain Preserve. I have worked with multiple carnivore organizations professionally for over twenty-five years, and my expertise pivots around mitigating conflicts between livestock producers and wildlife. Since two thousand and two, I've traveled around the world and have advised livestock producers on effective strategies to coexist with carnivores. I want to share some of my experience with ranchers in Namibia, particularly on a ranch owned by friends of mine, Timonines Miller outside of Keetman's Hoop. This is remarkably similar to Arizona. In fact, if I showed you a picture, you'd swear you're in Cochise County. It's an arid desert that gets on average under six inches of rain per year, and yet they farm sustainably with cattle and sheep. When you ask them what they farm, they say they farm grass and wildlife, understanding that this is the key to their success. Without grass, they have no livestock. This ranch has been in their family for over three generations, and it is being taken over by their son. A hundred percent of their livelihood depends on livestock, yet they coexist with leopards, hyenas, jackals, cheetahs, baboons, and so much more. They do this because they understand that the grass and the very ecosystem their family depends on is stronger and more resilient with predators. They take responsibility and protect their livestock from predators. They don't just complain and arbitrarily remove them. They are ranchers, not hobby ranchers, true ranchers. They protect their animals, they don't make excuses, and they do what is best for future generations, not just what is easiest. In most of the world, there is no government subsidies. It's bad enough that our public lands are being trashed by cattle in one of the worst droughts in history, but now the very key to restoring these degraded lands, wolves, is being prevented from returning. When are you going to do what is actually best for Cochise County? Wolves are economically worth their weight in gold and ecologically priceless. We can all agree that Cochise County needs more groundwater, less catastrophic wildfires, more erosion control, less flash flood flooding, and better ecosystem services. Scientifically, this is documented to begin with restoring wolves. This resolution is not based on science nor what is best for Cochise County. We need tolerance, and we need wolves. Thank you for listening to me, and I hope that you will do what is best for all residents of Cochise County, both today and in the future, and not just what is easiest for a handful of people that are complaining the loudest. Thank you so much.
All right. Next up, we have Ms. Aurelia.
Get up here, please. Riley, Riley.
Aurelia Niels, you're up next. That's a young lady that spoke last time, right?
His name is Elliot Niels, and the spirit's known he adds a skiga goal, pious squishy double send it back. I'm eight years old. It was born and raised in Arizona. I am already a published artist. I play the violin and piano. I've been dancing in LA since I was four. I ride horses, and I'm about to start competing in gymnas. I am homeschooled, and this allows me to spend most of my days outside. Unlike most kids, I don't watch TV or play video games, and I only use electronics to practice the four other languages I am learning. Instead, I race tickets, turkeys, and trade my ponies and dogs. I live on the banks of the San Pedro River and explore this river every day, attract wildlife, and learn the languages of birds. There used to be wolves on this river, but they were killed long ago, and this river has suffered because they are God. I'm also the founder of an organization called She Saves Species. Dr. Danggood was our first member. I'm here because I and everyone in my group loves wolves and all apex predators. Apex predators are animals on the top of the food web. These carnivores eat meat and help regulate everything, from deer to coyotes to even flowers and grasses. They are so important that scientists don't even know all of their values. Don't worry, I'll figure these out when I grow up. Unlike many people, I have been fortunate and have spent time with wild wolves. In fact, just a few days ago, I was up at Southwest Wildlife and have spent time with Mexican gray wolves. I wanted to teach you how to speak to wolves that use their ears to communicate, since we don't have big ears, we can use our hands. Ears up means I'm a friend, but ears up with a playground or a tail wag means I want to play, however, ears back means you win or I'm no threat. This language also works for your dog at home, which are the exact species, canis lupus. I don't understand why so many grownups are afraid of these wolves. They aren't big or scary at all. They are smart, curious, and all above all. They are smart, curious, and all above else care about taking care of their pups and family. I think a lot of people could learn from wolves. I'm so sad to learn the first pack of wolves returned to Cochise County was removed, and that had even nursing puppies. And one puppy was killed. This is unnecessary and heartbreaking. People need to learn how to share with wolves that were here first. Do, please do everything you can to protect our amazing Mexican gray wolves. Please reject this resolution that has so many mistakes, and so many other kids want to grow up knowing there are wild wolves in our Cochise County. Your actions decide what world we will inherit. Please remember us, kids, maybe small, but we are a hundred percent of the future, and we depend on you.
All right. Thank you, Aurelia. I'll give Ira, Ira, is, is Ira there? I recall Ira from the previous meeting. Is she there?
Uh, she just, she just had her, uh, she wasn't speaking.
Okay. All right, all right, all right. I was gonna give her a chance if she did. That's okay. All right. So, uh, that's it for those that have asked to be, uh, to speak publicly. Non-speakers, uh, to be named, uh, in opposition to the resolution are Nancy Thomas, Jeff Sturgis, Michael Gregory, Greta Anderson, Margaret Wilch, Deborah Herzog, Chris Bugbee, Robin Silver, and Yorick Odin Plants, along with sixteen anonymous submissions, and we have two anonymous submissions in support of the resolution. So that's all we have for requests to speak. So, uh... All right. Hang on, we'll have the clerk, I'll give the clerk a minute to, to look at it. I, I didn't hear what, what the story is. Leave it to you. Doesn't.
You opened it up.
Yeah, let him, he got it, just, he missed it. Hang on, hang on a second. Hang on, we'll get. They were counted in with this number here?
Yes.
Okay, but they, but they submitted in before nine? All right, we'll let them talk. Yeah, yeah.
That's, everybody else will look back.
All right, so, uh, hey, 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 he submitted a request to speak. It was inadvertently placed in with the non-speakers, uh, because the box wasn't checked that you requested to speak, but we'll, we'll, uh, we'll let you go. Um, so Ethan, you have three minutes.
Appreciate you.
Yeah.
Hi. Uh, I just want to say that I'm very disappointed with the resolution y'all are trying to pass today. Not only have you blatantly ignored a majority of your constituency, but you're passing a resolution that has been heavily influenced by the Cattlemen's Association industry propaganda. Based on what I read in the resolution, I don't think you guys have done a very good job in fact-checking the information that the ranchers have put forth. Now, if it were up to them, wolves would not exist. In their culture, there's no room for coexistence of their industry and predators. Uh, that much has been made clear to me in all the years I've worked with the ranching community, and, you know, I get it. It's hard to run an operation when things are inconveniencing you. A very small minority have taken a run at adapting their practice to coexist with wildlife such as wolves, because changing and adapting to new situations can be scary and it can be difficult. That being said, it can and has been done in many places successfully. So I ask you to consider, why are we so adamantly going after the future of the wolf while simultaneously failing to support and encourage ranchers to adapt their practices to a changing system? Not a single sentence in your resolution is pushing ranchers in our county or beyond to take any preemptive measures to reduce livestock conflicts. This is absolutely ridiculous and, and in my opinion unfair. They're claiming that there is no chance of coexistence before it has been attempted, which to me is dishonest, and it poses a massive disservice to our wildlands and the greater community. Countless studies have proven the wolves benefit to ecological systems, and even more have shown the detriment of cattle production in these same systems. Seeing as this argument is centered around economics, consider environmental health and how is an incredibly important aspect of a region's economic viability and future. So I ask you, I beg you, to table this resolution and create one that is actually fair and balanced, one that represents all of your constituency, including the wildlife and wildlands that you oversee. Your community is relying on you to represent them, so please follow through and remember your duty to protect and steward the land for future generations. I have been farming throughout my entire adult life. Uh, I'm moving into, you know, taking care, getting a herd of myself, and I know there's gonna be struggles with, like, I've seen mountain lions on my property, and, uh, I know it's gonna be a pain, but it's like, why can't we try? Why can't we try something? I mean, have any of you guys tried to do any predator mitigation in your operation? And I'm not saying lethal removal. I'm saying, thank you.
All right, next up is, uh, William Robert Stoller.
Hello, Board. Thanks for having me speak and allowing the, the box-checking fiasco to be resolved. Um, I'm a lifelong resident of Cochise County. I was born and, born and raised here in Cochise County, and I have extensive experience in raising Mexican gray wolves. I'm a friend of ranchers, and I'm personally reliant on local meat, and I've personally lost livestock animals to predators. And I do believe that these ranchers should be provided with adequate compensation, and I'm happy to see my talks, my tax dollars go to preserving the livelihoods of our food producers here in Cochise County. However, the presence of predators is crucial to the biological diversity of our region, which affects everything from climate to watershed systems, which affect agriculture, including ranching. As I said, I believe the ranchers should be compensated for their losses, but ecology is a complex system, and it can't be managed solely in the interest of commercial ventures. The commercial ventures rely on the entire environment being attacked, not just what happens within their property lines. So I'm here as well to request that this resolution be tabled until adequate measures are implemented in which the Board's constituency is fairly and fully represented in the interest of the health and continuity of Cochise County and the biodiversity thereof. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, so that's it this time, right? All right. So, uh, back to the item, Agenda Item Number Seventeen, any discussion from the members of the Board?
Certainly. Sure. Uh, I will repeat some of my comments from our previous meeting, which go like this. Environmentalism is the current anti-capitalism vehicle of choice. In my view, environmentalists never fight for greater liberty or less control. That's why they much prefer globalism over national sovereignty. Post-modern Marxism uses economic class struggle and any suitable class and social groupings of people, yes, and even plants, frogs, fish, and wolves, the presumed downtrodden victims or their advocates demanding restitution through taxes, special rights, protected status, and we even heard a, uh, a suggestion for subsidy, and so on. So I'm against that. If you want to know if, if, uh, the US government is overstepping its bounds, just ask yourself, would the original states have ratified the Constitution if it said an endangered fish or plant would threaten the state economy, or wolves would be protected even if they ate domestic cattle? I think the answer is no. Our founding fathers would not have, uh, ratified the Constitution if it claimed those things, and, uh, I have a Constitution here. I'm pretty familiar with Article One, Section Eight, Clause Seventeen, and the property clause of, uh, Article Four, Section Three, and basically, there is no wolf clause in the Constitution. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Um, so first of all, I'd like to definitely disagree with those in the audience that say, "We haven't listened," or "We don't represent the constituents." There's a lot of ranchers that can't come here, and actually, they're the ones that elected me in Precinct Fifty-One. They're east of Douglas, from the border all the way up to New Mexico and Portal, and I talk to them all, and I go out into the field. So when you say that they're not represented, you're, you're wrong, because I've talked to them. I've also talked to a lot of the ranchers I know in Al Prieta. So this is one thing. What I'm against is when you bring or reintroduce or introduce an animal into an area that has not had a prey analysis, you're then basically giving this animal very, very slim chance of being able to sustain itself. We know cattle is managed by people. Wolves have to be out there in the environment doing what they can, right? So that pack that was removed was severely hydrated, and the pup that died was not because of them removing it, but because it was sick. So right here, this is my problem. If you had Cochise County had prey, that they would be able to sustain themselves other than livestock, I would say absolutely, but I think you all, and I think the people who introduced the Mexican wolf made a big mistake. You cannot put an animal into an area that cannot sustain it. And as far as Mexico, I mean, I, I was looking forward to talking to you all after the work session had arranged a meeting. It was canceled. I asked to meet with you guys again, and no one called me back. So right there, I was wondering how serious you were. Um, I met afterwards, I met with all the other counties and the echo counties, eastern counties of association, and they're not these people who are for just the ranchers. But the wolves that aren't causing problems in the counties are up in the Mongolian Rim, and then they're also in the Sierra Madres, right? But they're not here in Cochise County. So the other issue too is there has to be border collaboration. I don't see that. You said there is, that's why I was looking forward to meeting with you. I, when I go to Al Prieta and I talk to all the ranchers and all the people that I knew for generations, they don't want the Mexican wolf. That has to be worked on first. That has to be worked on the Mexican side to make sure that they're gonna support having the Mexican wolf in their territory. You say there is, and I'm just telling you, of all the people that I talked to, I didn't see that. So I was looking forward to meeting with you. So on that basis, that's why I can't support the Mexican wolf in Cochise County. It's great up in the Mongolian Rim and the Sierra Madres, but not here in Cochise County. And I always ask this of people, well, you don't want the cattle, then what is your solution? Because it can't just be, "We just want grass, we just want birds." It has to be something that people would be able to sustain themselves. I have been fourth generation in Douglas. I do not want to see Douglas die on the vine. Cattle industry is huge. Three hundred fifty thousand head of cattle came through Nogales and Douglas Port of Entry before COVID. It's only gonna increase with this port of entry. So, yeah, you're right, we have to all work, but you have to have a basic foundation for these wolves to be able to sustain themselves. Otherwise, to me, that's just cruelty, and Mexico has to be in on the program. So until those two things happen, I have to vote for this resolution. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna add, um, as I mentioned before, this program, the way it was rolled out, was, was flawed from the very beginning. Um, there was never an agreement between the various stakeholders, for example, the ranchers and the environmental, uh, folks, even the government in the state of Arizona, and even in New Mexico. The New Mexican, uh, ranchers were not very happy with the way this was rolled out. It was foisted upon them. They were forced to follow a compensation schedule that basically underfunded them and basically made them a secondary food source, uh, for wolves that were reintroduced into the wolf recovery area, and they weren't properly and adequately compensated. If you look at what's going on in Colorado right now with the reintroduction of the North American gray wolf up there, they have literally blown through the, uh, fund that was set up to reimburse ranchers. It was originally three hundred fifty thousand dollars. The state had to throw in another five million dollars in supplement because of the number of cattle that are being killed in Colorado, and in that particular area, there are thousands and thousands of deer and elk, and but for some wacky crazy reason, the wolves aren't eating the elk and the deer, even, even though there's lots. So there's a significant issue here with the way this program was, was rolled out, not taking into account the economic damage, uh, that this was going to cause. And, and I looked at it, and I, I've spoke with a lot of folks, and I cannot see the cost benefit right now directly from the tourism aspect of this. It just, it just doesn't appear. It's all this anecdotal, anecdotal number. There's never, there hasn't been a significant change in the, in the tourism that has occurred since the introduction of the wolf versus prior to the wolf being here. It's virtually the same. So there isn't really an economic benefit that I see. I see an economic, an economic detriment because the ranching community is suffering hundreds of thousands of dollars in losses, and they're not being adequately compensated. And had that been the focus and the priority, you probably wouldn't have had the opposition to the reintroduction and the presence of the wolf in Cochise County, but because it wasn't properly implemented, uh, you're getting this opposition. The resolution that we're putting forth basically sends a message to the federal government that before you guys go rolling in here and screwing up the economy in Cochise County, maybe you should do a better job of rolling the plan out and the compensation for those economically affected. I mean, if you want to basically provide a food source for the wolves, why don't you go buy a few thousand head of your own cattle and let them loose up in the forest and let the wolves eat those cattle rather than the cattle of, of the ranching community here in Cochise County? Or bring a bunch of elk and deer in, uh, or something? But there clearly isn't a sufficient food base here, uh, to do that, because it is directly resulting in the wolves looking for easier prey, and unfortunately, that easier prey is cattle, and then the ranchers aren't being adequately compensated, uh, for their loss. The resolution reflects our sort of opposition to the way this program was rolled out. It reflects that we're asking that the ranchers be duly compensated for their loss, uh, their actual loss, not seventy-five percent of the economic value of the cow, but the actual cost it's incurred of, of having to go get the cow, feed the cow, raise the cow, the loss of calves related to that cow being lost, um, the cost of having to go get a new cow, um, all that has to be taken into consideration, um, and none of it is, and, and that is the heartburn. So if the federal government would like to retool this program, along with Arizona Game and Fish, and then provide the data to this board that shows that there will be adequate, um, food base for wolves, maybe down the road, we'll think about it, but right now, I don't see it. And, uh, to protect the economy of rural Arizona, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reserve my right to support this, uh, resolution. So any, any other discussion? None?
I, I'd just like to point out too that that resolution just doesn't talk about against the wolf, but it also supports the Ranch Patrol, it supports the county, it supports getting data, so that we're just not sitting there, as you guys imply, that we just want to kill the wolf. There's a lot in there that would provide data, would provide investigation, would provide support to the Ranch Patrol, and have an actual agent in Wilcox instead of Phoenix. So there is a lot of good things in that resolution. It's just the way it was done was wrong, and I think it's cruel to the Mexican wolf. That's it.
Yeah, and to, to add, um, sixteen North American gray wolves have been killed in Colorado since the introduction as well, mysteriously, you know? So that's what you get when you don't adequately take care of those affected populations. And, and that, by the way, was a state initiative, from what I understand, that was overwhelmingly voted on in Denver in support and overwhelmingly opposed everywhere else in the state. So again, you have a, a community that has no, is not impacted by this species because they live in a metro area where they don't have it, and then the community that voted against it was basically for, it was forced upon them, and now they're having to deal with it. I believe a similar situation is occurring here in Arizona, where you have people living in urban areas, in, in towns and cities, you know, all in support of it because they don't have them coming in and grabbing their fluffy and jumping over the wall at the swimming pool with it, and some ranchers being forced to basically, uh, bear the cost of this reintroduction. So until that disparity is fixed, um, I stand in support of the resolution. So let's vote on it. Um, the resolution before the Board is to approve, oh, I'm sorry, I'm bringing it here. To adopt Resolution Twenty-five Twenty-One expressing opposition to the current implementation of the gray wolf, uh, Mexican gray wolf reintroduction program and calling for reforms. uh, Mexican gray wolf reintroduction program and calling for reforms. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Resolution passes three zero. All right, now we'll go back to the regular thing. All right, regular agenda. So can I get a motion? So we gotta go into public hearings, I guess. Uh, Laura, is that, is that correct? We'll do the public hearing next? All right, so let's go into the public hearings. All right, first, first up, um, in a basically, uh, request a motion to go into a public hearing. Let's do that first.
Mr. Chair, I move that we go into public hearing session.
All right, second, all those, all right, so with the motion, we, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, so let's go into, uh, a public hearing. So the first item in public hearing, uh, we're going to see is agenda item number eight. Can I hear a motion to approve agenda item number eight, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve series eighteen craft distiller new liquor license application submitted by Joseph P. Monks for San Isidore Vineyards at thirty-four sixty-five East Fawn Ranch Road, Pierce, Arizona, eight five six two five.
Second.
All right, Ms. Longenhagen, could you explain the?
Chairman, here to know members of the board, this item's for a new series eighteen craft distiller liquor license applied submitted for Saint Isidore Vineyards located in Pierce, Arizona. The application's been reviewed and recommended for approval by the appropriate departments. Property taxes for the parcel are current. The notice and application were posted as required by state law, and no formal protest will receive, received. The applicant has paid the hundred dollar processing fee, and board staff is recommending approval.
All right, uh, is Mr. Monk here? Mr. Monk, do you wish to speak? No, all right, that's, that's fine. All right, so the motion before the board is to approve the series eighteen liquors license. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, all right, that is approved. We will now close that public hearing, and now we will open the next public hearing. Can I get a motion to move, uh, agenda item number nine, please?
I move that we adopt resolution two-five dash nineteen granting a telecommunications franchise to Midvale Telephone Company, DBA MTA, MTE Communications.
Second. All right, so we will go to Mr. Correa to explain the franchise agreement.
All right, if this is, um, telecommunications franchise to Midvale Telephone Company, then that is something that's been submitted with a boundary designated in the service area, uh,
I can't hear you.
Yeah, your mic is not.
We're required to, we're required to have a franchise agreement by statute. So this is typically submitted with a, a form, a check, and an indication of the service area. So that should be approved.
Okay, and this includes the language you asked for, correct, Mr. Crosby?
I believe so.
All right.
Yeah, all of the new franchise agreements have that. Thank you, Mr. Correa.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, um, any other discussion?
No, sir.
All right, uh, the motion before the board is to adopt resolution twenty-five dash nineteen granting a telecommunications franchise to Mid, Midvale Telephone. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, okay, that passes three zero. All right, we will close that public hearing. Okay, now we will open the next public hearing. Can I get a motion to move? Oh, wait, 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 I gotta do this one different. This is, this is different. So item number ten, we have to first do a motion to remove it from the table because this item was tabled. So can I get a motion to remove agenda item number ten from the table to put back on the agenda for reconsideration?
Mr. Chair, I move that we remove from the table this item number ten.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so item number ten has now been removed from the table and placed back on the agenda. We will now get a motion to consider the item. So I need a motion for item.
I believe this one is the one that needs to be withdrawn. The applicant, uh, wants to withdraw his application and resubmit a different.
Well, let's go to Mr. Taylor first, and then we could, we could make the proper adequate motion. So, so Mr. Taylor, for yours. Okay, all right, so, uh,
That was number eleven?
That was number ten.
Oh, number ten, okay.
Number ten. So he's withdrawing his application, and he will reapply with the different zoning. And then our mo, our, our motion here would be to take, no, we just don't do anything.
Delete it.
We just, we just take it off the agenda. We'll delete it, right? And that's all we need to do?
I think that since the applicant is no longer pursuing this particular agenda item, then we could.
We don't need to vote on it. We could just have it, have the clerk take it off the agenda.
Chair discretion, ma'am.
No, the clerk is shaking her head.
I think it'd be neater if, uh, we had a motion to withdraw.
Motion to withdraw? Okay, all right, so let's do that. All right, so let's do a motion to withdraw it from the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we remove item number ten from the agenda.
Second.
All right, uh, motion has been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, item number ten has now been removed. All right, so let's close that public hearing. Now we will open a new public hearing for agenda item number eleven. Can I get a motion for agenda item number eleven, please?
I move to adopt zoning ordinance two-five dash ten to rezone tax parcel one-one-seven dash zero-five dash zero-five-four B from SR dash forty-three, single household residential district, one dwelling per forty-three thousand square feet, and NB neighborhood business district to SR dash one-seven-four, single household residential district, one dwelling per four acres, pursuant to the application of Jeff T D, Supervisor District Three.
Second. Let's go to Mr. Taylor for an explanation.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. That was our long one.
Yeah, the property's located in Supervisor District Three and Sun Site Unit Two, approximately five miles west of Highway one ninety-one. And Sun Site Two has a mixed-up rural residential and business zoning. Most parts in Arizona in SR District, uh, the board recently approved a tax amendment that applies to the S R zoning district to encourage applicants to consider ourselves a little more. Couple of drone images, this would be going to the north, to the east, and to the west. Uh, the application complies with applicable factors. Um, the request would be compatible with the rural residential growth pattern. Plus Sun Site Number Two, um, the request also introduces the number of dwellings. Uh, staff did not.
Any factors not in favor? Um, also staff mailed twenty-nine notices and received no responses in favor or opposition.
Okay.
Based on the factors in favor, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval without special conditions by a vote of seven to zero during their July ninth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. And staff also, uh, supports this application without special conditions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, is there anyone present that wishes to speak on this docket item? Seeing none? Okay, we will close the public hearing, uh, board discussion.
Yes, sir.
None?
No.
None?
Sounds like everybody's happy. Can't beat that.
Yeah, can't beat that. All right, so, uh, with no discussion, the motion before the board is to adopt zoning ordinance twenty-five, uh, ten to rezone partial one seventeen oh five oh five four B. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion passes three zero. All right, next, can I get a motion to move agenda item number twelve?
I move.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I move to adopt zoning ordinance two-five dash eleven to rezone tax parcel one-one-five dash ten, one-zero dash three-two-three from neighborhood business district to SR dash one-seventy-four, single household residential district, one dwelling per four acres, pursuant to the application of James and Pamela Mercer, Supervisor District Three.
Second. All right, uh, Mr. Taylor, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board members. This is the staff presentation for docket RZ twenty-five zero five. An applicant initiated request to downzone property from neighborhood business to SR one-seventy-four. The applicants are James and Pamela Mercer. The property, again, is located in Sun Sites Number Two. Uh, the proposed zoning district SR one-seventy-four is consistent with the comprehensive plan designations, and the applicants wish to develop the site for single-family residential use. Again, the property is located in Supervisor District Three, um, approximately four miles west of Highway one ninety-one. Again, Sun Sites Number Two, and much of Sun Sites generally are predominantly zoned SR, either SR twenty-two, forty-three, or one-seventy-four. Um, and again, this was, um, originally intended to be an application for RU four, but based on the court's subsequent text amendment to the SR district, the applicants moved forward with an SR one-seventy-four application. Couple of drone images, this would be looking to the northwest, towards the mountains, to the west, also towards the mountains, and to the east. The request complies with all applicable factors. Uh, it's also compatible with the rural residential growth pattern, uh, developing in Sun Sites Number Two, and this is in a beneficial downzone from a business district to a residential zoning district. Staff has not identified any factors not in favor. Additionally, staff mailed thirty-one notices, receiving one response in favor from an adjacent property owner. Based on the factors in favor, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval without special conditions by a vote of seven to zero during their regular meeting on July ninth, and staff is also supportive of this application without special conditions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, so we're gonna open the public hearing on that. Anybody wish to speak regarding this item? Going once, going twice? All right, we will close the public hearing on that, and now we will. Any discussion in the board?
None, sir.
All those in favor of approving a zoning ordinance twenty-five dash eleven to rezone parcel one-fifteen dash ten, three-twenty-three, say aye.
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 Aye, all right, motion passes three to zero. Can I get a motion for number thirteen, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt zoning ordinance twenty-five dash twelve to rezone tax parcel four-zero-eight dash one-zero dash zero-one-five from RU four, rural district, one dwelling per four acres, to RU two, rural district, one dwelling per two acres pursuant to the application of Daniel Barnett, Supervisor District Two.
Second. I'll second it. All right, we'll go to you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board members. This is the staff presentation for docket RZ twenty-five zero six. An applicant, an applicant initiated request to rezone property from RU four to RU two. The applicant is Daniel Barnett. The property is located at the approximate corner of Puzzy Ranch and James Ranch Road. Um, the requested RU two zoning district is compatible with the current comprehensive plan designations. Uh, we're not, we don't, the applicant didn't provide us with any future land use. Um, I think this is a case where the owner's parent has or potentially could pass away and wants to subdivide the property for their children. Again, the property is located within Supervisor District Number Two. Uh, it's located west of Douglas and approximately one-half mile south of Highway eighty. It is surrounded by other parcels with, uh, similar rural zoning. Um, and again, RU two is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Couple of drone images, this would be viewing to the north, to the northwest, and to the west. Staff finds that the application complies with all applicable factors. Um, as of right now, that area is more or less considered a rural residential development pattern with really no business uses. So those are our factors in favor. Not in favor would be with the coming port and subsequent development of the port. This, this use, if it were developed for residential use, could be potentially incompatible with those future non-residential land uses that we expect to, to develop over time, north of the Newport. Uh, and there could also be a, a potential issue with public access. The applicant might have to secure an easement with an adjacent property owner. Uh, Puzzy Ranch Road is not intended for development. It's, uh, because of the major gas line that traverses that area.
Is the applicant aware of these negative considerations?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Supervisor Crosby, yes, the applicant is aware.
Thank you, sir.
And, and they understand what that means?
The applicant, I did have a pretty intense conversation with the applicant, and he is fully aware of the potential.
So like three years from now, he's not going to be back screaming, built a warehouse right next to his beautiful
Because.
house blocking his view or something, right? Because this is, this has been a recurring theme here. People buy these properties not knowing that right next door is zoned industrial or zoned commercial, or they're living next to a military airfield or, or something along those lines. So, um, as long as the buyer's aware, or not the buyer, I'm sorry, the applicant is aware.
The applicant has indicated he is aware of the coming.
Do I have, we're on the record.
Okay, we're on the record that he understands that there's going to be development with his new port of entry, and he's very close to it. Okay.
All right, so let's, uh, open, any, any questions for Mr. Taylor? All right, we're gonna open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak regarding this docket? Item going once, going twice?
Can I, uh, I'm Daniel Barnett. I'm the applicant.
Oh, okay, sir, go ahead. You have, you wish to speak, you have three minutes?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and Supervisors. Um, I know it's a little different direction than the land going, uh, around the next two, uh, items in the, uh, docket are, are going different. Uh, but yes, as Mr. Taylor said, uh, my mother passed away. Um, sorry.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's been her, her plan to, uh, divide this land to her, her children. And unfortunate with the current zoning, I cannot do that as the trustee of the Barnett Family Trust. So I need to upzone it so that I can then divide it into, uh, parcels, so I can give the land to my siblings per my mother's will. Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Sorry for your loss. All right, um, so any other persons requesting to speak? Any going once? Yes, do you, please come forward and state your name.
Janet Harris. I live in Benson, but, uh, that was my nephew that was speaking, so. I just lost my sister, but, um, we have all that land right there, James Ranch Road. Most of that land is owned by some James. Um, anyway, um, as, as it, the ten acres set, they, you know, in the, in my mom, my sister's will, um, she, you know, they wanted to, uh, divide it up so that each child, you know, and that's what he wanted to do so that, uh, he, they could change it. He knows, you know, about what's going on and everything.
So they can sell it, or they can keep it, whatever you want. Okay, got it.
You know, but, um, and we're just all trying to keep it in the family. So if he sells it, we're hoping he'll sell it to, you know, one of the other cousins and nephews and nieces and that all, you know, that own that land now.
Okay.
And things, so, uh, that's why we wanted to come down and, you know, support him and what he was trying to do, but also try to make sure that, you know, people know what's going on and, and, and what we're trying to do and stuff with that port of entry going in whenever it goes in, whenever.
It will, it will.
I can say on that.
I know, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna prove that it will happen really soon. That's my, my main thing in, in, in my term here. So as long as you know that, and then, you know, maybe you will benefit from it.
Yeah, you might get a bigger dollar.
Get a big, big dollar for it, because if, if it goes away, I'm planning it to go. You guys should make some good money if you wanted to.
Right, we're not looking to make money. We, we've had that land since the late fifties. My dad and grandfather bought those acreage and stuff, so it's, it's kind of a pride in our family.
Sure.
You know.
So you can probably keep it as a little oasis then, yeah, right?
Yeah, and we're, we're not really thinking about living on it because we know it's going to become industrial with the port of entry. So, uh, one nephew has Douglas Diesel in Douglas, and he wants to maybe put a plant, you know,
Business.
a business out there, you know, on their ten acres and, and stuff like that, so.
Oh, that'd be great.
You know, we've, we've got some plans. We want to go with the county and the state and, and everything and, and stuff, but, uh, we just want to make sure that everybody's taken care of properly.
Got it.
All right, got you. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else request to speak? Going once, going twice? Okay, we will close the public hearing. Next, we will have board discussion. Any discussion?
No, sir.
None? All right, all those in favor of approving zoning ordinance twenty-five dash twelve, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion passes three to zero. There you go, you got your rezoning. Um, next, can I get a motion for number fourteen, please?
I move to adopt zoning ordinance two-five dash fourteen to rezone tax parcels four-oh-seven dash six-eight zero-zero-seven A, four-oh-seven dash six-eight dash zero-zero-eight B, four-oh-seven dash six-eight dash zero-one-zero, and Four-oh-seven dash six-eight dash zero-one-zero and four-oh-seven dash six-eight dash oh-one-three E from RU four Rural District, one dwelling per four acres to Light Industry, Industry District. Pursuant to the application of Tactical Holdings LLC in District Two.
Second, all right, motion, we'll go to Mr. Taylor for explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, this is the staff presentation of RZ twenty-five zero eight. An applicant initiated request to rezone property from RU four to Light Industrial. Again, the applicant is Tactical, Tactical Holdings LLC, property is located approximately southwest corner of Highway eighty and James Ranch Road, totals about six, one-hundred-and-sixteen acres over four parcels. Uh, the requested zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan designations, uh, the property is currently undeveloped. Proposed uses include warehousing and storage uses, as the board has seen on previous applications, as well as a truck stop at the hard corner of Highway eighty and James Ranch Road. Property is located again in Supervisor District Number Two, located west of Douglas. This map shows the location of the subject parcels, uh, unhatched, again, about one-hundred-and-sixteen acres, they are surrounded by other parcels, zoned rural, but also designated by the plan for non-residential uses. And this would be north of the property, uh, northwest of the property, the yard in rezoning that came before the border a month or so ago. The applicant has provided a site plan showing those warehousing uses on the three southernmost parcels, uh, as well as the western parcel with the truck stop at the hard corner of Highway eighty and James Ranch Road. This is an exhibit showing some of the right-of-way dedications and easement dedications that the county would be requiring part of this, um, to establish that infrastructure to support the traffic associated with the port. There's a few drawn images, this would be viewing to the southwest. And the west. And northwest. The request complies with all applicable factors, um, there are no adjacent residential uses to any of these parcels. These would allow land uses to support the new port of entry and contributing to a potential new employment center in the, in the port of entry area. Commercial uses such as truck stops are most appropriate along highways and at major intersections. Staff did not receive any opposition and has not identified any factors not in favor. We did mail fifty-six notices to property owners, uh, we did not receive any responses in favor or opposition. I'd get again, get a few phone calls, just wanting to know what was going on, but there was no opposition to the application itself. Based on the factors in favor, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with special conditions by a vote of seven to zero during their July ninth regular meeting. And those would be the required easement dedications per the attached exhibit, which was included with this PowerPoint presentation as well as the staff memo. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, let's, uh, open the public hearing. All right, does anyone, uh, request to speak to zoning ordinance twenty-five dash fourteen? Anyone? Anyone, all right, no one, we're gonna close the public hearing, discussion amongst the board.
Sure.
In this, all right, so the motion before the board is to adopt zoning ordinance resolution twenty-five dash fourteen, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero, all right, next up, can I get a motion to move, uh, zoning ordinance twenty-five thirteen?
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt zoning ordinance twenty-five dash thirteen to rezone tax parcel four-zero-eight dash three-four dash zero-zero-five C from RU four Rural District, one dwelling per four acres to LI, Light Industry District pursuant to the application of Tactical Holdings LLC Supervisor District Two.
Second?
Second.
All right, so we'll go to Mr. Taylor for an explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this would be docket RZ twenty-five zero seven, the applicant has requested the board table this item to September second.
Okay.
Uh, so we would request the motion be amended to reflect tabling this item to September second.
Can I get a, listen to table the item, please?
I move to, uh, I move to have a motion to table the item fifteen.
Second, all right, motion before the board is to table zoning ordinance twenty-five thirteen for, I'm sorry, what did you say it was?
September second.
September second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, the motion is tabled. All right.
Thank you.
So, next up, we have, oh, that's it for the public hearings, thank you, Mr. Taylor, as always?
Yes.
All right, so next we will move on to agenda item number sixteen, can I get a motion, please? It's your turn.
It's my turn.
Yeah.
I move to approve proclamation declaring the week of July twenty through twenty-six, twenty twenty-five as pre-trial probation and parole, I'm sorry, and parole, parole week in Cochise County.
Second. All right, let's hear from Mr. Rios.
My favorite supervisor Goldman Supervisor Crosby, um, I would like to present the, uh, proposed proclamation for pre-trial probation parole and parole supervision week, July twentieth through twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Whereas community supervision professionals are an essential part of the justice system, uphold the law with dignity while recognizing the rights of the public to be safeguarded from criminal activity. And whereas sixty-six probation officers, juvenile detention officers, and staff working for state and county agencies serving Cochise County with the responsibility for providing critical pre-trial, pre-sentence, and post-adjudication assessment and monitor, monitoring of juvenile and adult offenders in the community. And whereas community supervision professionals are the heroes behind the mission, changing lives, enhancing public safety through their guidance of released offenders to a more stable, productive life in the communities in which they reside. And whereas community supervision professionals are a true force of positive change in the community, working in partnership with community agencies and groups. And whereas community supervision professionals provide services, support, and protection for victims. And whereas the criminal and juvenile justice systems in Cochise County could not operate without the dedication and hard work of community supervision professionals that wear a variety of hats during the course of their workday, making a difference in the lives of the offenders they supervise. And whereas Cochise County is pleased to pay tribute to this group of men and women who serve steadfastly in sometimes dangerous and overlooked fields of criminal justice. Now therefore, uh, be it resolved that we, the Cochise County Board of Supervisors proclaim the week of July twentieth through twenty-six, twenty twenty-five as pre-trial probation and parole week in the county. And encourage all citizens to honor these professionals in their important record of public services faithfully rendered.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work, too.
All right, so the motion before the board is to approve the proclamation, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero, your proclamation is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rios.
All right, we'll go, now go to eighteen. Can I get a motion for agenda item number eighteen, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the renewal of an intergovernmental agreement IGA Cochise College Sheriff's Department, Cochise County Sheriff's Office to continue operating the Southeast Arizona Law Enforcement Training Academy, CEALITA, effective July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five through May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
All right, uh, you don't look like.
No, I'm not Commander Watkins, uh, Lieutenant Sean Johnson, Commander Watkins is unavailable today. So we're asking for approval to renew the IGA between Cochise College, Sheriff's Department PD, and the Sheriff's Office. Uh, we've had the agreement in place for many years now, uh, there's really no substantive changes to the agreement, except some money was moved around to add some funding for our academy sergeant, which actually benefits the, uh, the county cuz we're, uh, the, the college is supporting that position more, requiring, uh, less dollars from the Sheriff's Office, uh, or the county. Um, so that's really the only changes, uh, do you have any questions? Yes, sir.
So as opposed to double dipping from the county and the college, there is less money from the county and it's being made up for by the, the college, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, what about, uh, how does overtime fit into that?
Well, um, so, the county pays for the academy sergeant's base salary. Uh, the, the college pays for any overtime funds that the academy sergeant needs to, to provide, uh, the services to the basic academy. Uh, so, in years past, uh, because the college hasn't fully funded what was required for the overtime, um, we came out of pocket, uh, forgive me for, for estimating, but somewhere around fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. Um, with the changes to this IGA, we should only be out of pocket one to five thousand, uh, so it is an improvement.
So, uh, fifteen thousand roughly, during what time period?
Um, I believe that's the entire, uh, year, so that'd be two academy classes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to just add, since Cochise College increased their, um, rate this year to the citizens of Cochise County, that it's good that they pay. So.
All right, any other discussion? All right, none, uh, the motion before the board is to approve the renewal of the IGA with Cochise College and the Sheriff's Police Department and the Cochise County Sheriff's Office to continue operating the Southern Arizona Law Enforcement Training Academy, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to.
Thank you.
All righty. All right, next up, agenda item number nineteen, can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve an intergovernmental agreement IGA between the Wilcox Unified School District and Cochise County Elections to provide for election supplies and services for the November fourth, twenty twenty-five election.
Sir, all right, uh, we have Ms. Avant here to answer any questions, any, do you have a statement, or do you wanna?
Just a standard, uh, thank you Chairman Antonari, members of the board, um, this is a, a standard intergovernmental agreement for the election for November fourth, uh, for Wilcox Unified School District for their bond, uh, budget override.
Any questions?
No.
None?
Just to confirm, and I already know the answer to this question, but this is going to include a vote center for day of voters.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor of approving agenda item number nineteen for the IGA between Wilcox Unified School District and the Cochise County's Election Department, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes three to zero, don't go nowhere. Next motion, number twenty, can I get a motion to move number twenty, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt resolution twenty-five dash twenty to approve vote center for the November fourth, twenty twenty-five election as listed on the attached exhibit and authorize the election director to make substitutions as necessary prior to the election in the event that a vote center replacement needs to be made in accordance with ARS sixteen four-one-one.
I'll second it. All right, so any discussion, any questions for Ms. Avant, you wanna, you wanna add a statement? Nope?
No.
All right, all right, so the motion before the board is to adopt resolution twenty-five twenty, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all right, that motion is approved, three to zero, can I get the last one, it's the last one, all right, can I get a motion for number twenty-one, please?
I move to approve an intergovernmental, I'm sorry, I move to approve an intergovernmental agreement IGA between the Naco Unified School District and Cochise County Elections to provide for election supplies and services for the November fourth, twenty twenty-five election.
Second, all right, any discussion?
I believe that vote center will be here, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, there's a vote center here.
Thank you very much. I, it, do I mean in, in this room, okay?
All right, very good. Any other comments? Nope, all right, the motion before the board is to approve the IGA between the Naco Unified School District and Cochise County Elections, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes three to zero, you have the good work.
Yep. Mr. Chair, uh, I would like to express my appreciation for everybody that helps during the elections, the volunteers, one of them is out there right now, she doesn't know, appreciate it, but I do, and I, there's another one. There's at least two election volunteers with us at this very moment, so I appreciate that.
All right, next up, uh, agenda item number twenty-two, can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve ADHS contract CTR zero-five zero-five nine-four amendment six, Health Start Program between the Arizona Department of Health Services and Cochise County Health and Social Services for the period of July sixth, twenty twenty-five through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Second?
Second.
All right, all right, motion, uh, we have Ms. Suzanne Hegel, she was out this year, I didn't even see you walk up there.
Yeah.
Uh, do you wish to?
Um, no, just that this, uh, extension would be for the next three months until the next five-year grant is awarded, which we're hoping that will happen in September.
Any discussions for Ms. Hegel?
Uh, no, but I did read the whole thing.
Thanks.
All right, uh, so the motion before the board is to approve the contract number CTR zero-five zero-five nine-four amendment six, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero, all right. Uh, next up, federal and state legislation, I'm sure everybody's been watching the news with, went on with the rescission bill, there was nine billion dollars, nine-point-two billion dollars in recovered spending, uh, that was recovered from the previous Congress's, uh, budget, um, and I'd asked that we look at that, um, down the road, I know we have, we have some time, it doesn't kick in until, was it January first is when it actually starts?
Um, yeah, the CSA, uh, reach out to them, they are putting together, uh, information on, on the bill.
Okay, all right, so, and then, um, that's it, and then, uh, legislature's out of session, so we don't have nothing happening at the state level, so, uh, and then next we'll go to our deputy county administrator for any additional information.
Nothing to add today.
You have, you have nothing to, to add, okay, any current events from District One? Or comments?
Uh, yeah, but I'll, I'll pass for now and come back to me, let's see if I can find what I wanna.
Oh, okay, all right, we'll go to District Two.
Um, I wanna do a shout-out to the Douglas Softball League, I don't know, softball, baseball league, they went all the way to Nationals.
Oh.
And were so close, but they did get beat by Hawaii yesterday, last night, but they were pretty darn close to winning it all, so, big shout-out to them. Um, also, I know that in Tombstone, um, this Saturday is at the shootout arena, there's a rodeo at seven PM. If anybody is, that's really fun to go to, really well done. And then on, uh, August the eighth is a tribute to Val Kilmore, where they're gonna do, I guess, a whole thing during the day. And then at night, at eight, seven PM or eight PM, they're gonna have a concert, it's gonna be, you know, he was also played Jim Morrison in The Doors. And so they're gonna have a concert with The Doors music, so it's gonna be an interesting day and, um, I suggest everyone go, it's a lot of fun. And that's it for now.
All right, but, nothing for me, so I'll go back to Mr. Crosby.
Just in, Arizona State Senator Wendy Rogers fires off letter to the White House requesting audit of Arizona election system. And this is just from, uh, twenty-first, Arizona State Senator Wendy Rogers sent a letter last week to President Trump and Commerce Secretary Howard Lutnick requesting a formal review of Arizona's election practices and systems, including foreign-made components used in tabulation machines. And that was from Ms. Senator Wendy Rogers, thank you, Mr. Chair, all right.
That should be it. All right, I don't see anything else, and I don't have the let me go back a little bit, I gotta pull up the sheet, for the next meeting, uh, will be the work session tomorrow, July twenty-third at ten AM in the hearing room for a presentation um, on construction management for the jail project.
Hmm.
So with that, any last minute?
Yes, sir.
Discussion, all right, we are adjourned.